Start with prayer, Father. And Father, we turn our hearts toward heaven and we're mindful of those who have sworn that they have a blessing of life and is named for freedom. We're mindful and thankful for all that you've done for us, be it those that protect us, that were bad to your phone and keep us safe, or march over them as the friends of the mindful business before us in the county today, who break the wisdom in this direction, but your name could be honored to be up there in the county.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, for the meeting today. First item of business for the Commissioners' meeting is the minutes. Sent via email. Any alterations or corrections? Not on our intermission.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay, we had two payrolls for County of year 2020 since our last meeting. Number seventeen is the total of two hundred forty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Payroll eighteen was two hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. We had a total of a hundred and forty-four claims totaling five hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents. Hand a motion for the financials.
Motion's approved.
Second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Okay. Bid opening and Scott.
I'm still selling the Hummer. Four months now.
It does.
It does, it does. I do have one bid for the Hummer. Last time it was four thousand fifty dollars, I believe.
Correct.
Please accept the correct sell. Four thousand five hundred. Ryan Carroll. So the one at four hundred and fifty bucks. So we'll see if that deters anybody for the next time.
Okay.
Just a couple of things to touch, based on one inmate population. We're at eighty-five total inmates as of this morning. Thirty-four of those are pre-trial superior. Twenty are pre-trial circuit. Eighteen are S six and nine are DOC. So as you can see, our numbers have gone up. One of the biggest factors in that is some of the people that are coming to jail are people that are generally not getting out because of either no bond, probation violation. I think a little bit of it's a wave of catch-up from COVID. Some of these people that either court dates were extended out or starting to come back, either failure of peers, probation violations, which are no bonds. And then some of the types of crimes in the higher classifications and the higher bonds, these people who have been coming in the last two weeks have not been getting, you know, released or back out. So that's one of the biggest things, which creates an intake habit for us and how we're dealing with the inmates. But we're managing every day, strategizing on how we're doing that. But that's kind of where we sit right now. Just a couple other updates. I think I told you the last time at the Commissioners' meeting that we did, we were going ahead with the purchase of the body scanner that has been purchased. It has been delivered. It was delivered last week and installed. And the training starts tomorrow on that. So we're going to be using that right away. The vacuum and heat sealers that we also purchased with the CARES Act money has been delivered and in. That helps with the packaging of inmates' property and those type of things. So those are up and running as well. And lastly, I was just saw over the weekend, I was off Friday, but Rick Velezquez from EMA had written us a grant earlier this year for new radios. And that was awarded through Homeland Security for a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So we were chunking away at it. We bought a little bit of radios last year. We were buying a little bit of radios. We just were getting ready to order some. So kudos to him and his work on that. That was a big expense that we were kind of chipping away at as we had a little bit of funds available. So looking forward to touching base with him and getting those things purchased for our agency. That's a big cost. We've used these radios for a long time and they no longer service them. So a lot of them have been going down lately. And that'd be a great addition to get the rest of those ordered for, not only for our portables, but the mobiles in all our cars. These things are not cheap. These are about four thousand dollars a piece. So they're pretty expensive. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Josh, we have you next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thursday, we completed chip and seal. Did about a hundred and two miles this year. Punched it out in twenty days. No rain helps. So thanks to all the guys for everything working smooth, no accidents. Everything went good. And in that is the road conversions from last year. Those were all coded too. So we've received some good feedback on those. This week, basically catching up through chip and seal. We don't service anything. We just go hammer down. So this week, we're going to clean up and basically service about every piece of equipment we have that we use for chip and seal. Everything's overdue, so that'll be this week. Through the process, we dirt patch all our radiuses. We've done that and will continue to do so until those are done. And then that dirt patcher will start floating around, just hitting some high spots, patching roads that we will be chipping ceiling next year. Later this week, once services are done, we'll start back up kind of like the spring and summer. We'll have a hand patching crew back out and we'll also have a backhoe crew back out. Kind of, you know the drill. One works north, one works south, and they flip-flop as notes and things get done. Our side ditch mowing, we're going to start unfortunately the W word of winter. So we will start this, probably in the next couple of weeks, start doing the two passes. We always do one in the summer. This cut, we do two, just so the snow has a place to blow off. So we will begin doing that here in the next couple of weeks, getting everything mowed back. But then it rained yesterday, so we may have to do it twice. But we'll see. My yearly corn message this year, I haven't really had a ton of complaints, just a couple. You know, the farmers just mow it back. I don't want to have to mow it back. It's not my, you know, I don't want to harvest corn. I joke, sometimes we should own a little combine like Mike Mossberg uses to, you know, maybe we can make an income off of cutting corn at corners. But I'd rather the farmers do that. There's schools in session, a lot of young drivers, things of that sort. So make sure intersections are clear. Something I didn't put on there, I just added myself. I don't know, I know Kevin, I sent you some messages about Huntington County. Huntington County last week had three trucks burned down. It was after hours. It was electrical fire. They think they're still doing investigation. One truck in the middle caught fire. Literally, you can't even tell what kind of chassis it was. It melded. And two next to it melded. And one, a fourth, got some significant damage too. I did reach out to them, let them know anything I can do to help. I mean, that's kind of our general insurance for us to go down that path. I do have for nine months. And to have four down, I don't know what they're going to do when snow flies. So there may be, I did reach out a hand to offer to help if possible. So that may be something that we, a path we may have to go down to see with insurance.
What Larry know or Tom will know.
Well, I've also got a couple of loan agreements between Fountain County, Montgomery County, because Montgomery County lost all their fleet.
Yeah.
And like thirteen, fourteen trucks go down. The whole barn burnt and all the trucks were inside. So if that comes around, I'll get with Roy. But we've already got some drafted.
Yeah. But I have two or three spare trucks that, like I said, are my, I mean, they're not airtight. They're rough. There are old Bolos and old Internationals. I mean, they are what they are, but they're better than nothing. And they hold a snowplow on the front. So I just wanted to throw that out as a warning to you guys that I did reach out to them. And it may arise that, you know, we may want to help a part of your county because we would want the same in return. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Josh, I'm going to send that to you right now.
All right. Nate?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate it. Got some good news today. First thing on the list was just kind of updates on the Wells County Regional Sewer District. I want to read this statement, just because I've spent too much time writing it out to get it right. The Wells County Regional Sewer District was awarded six million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in forgivable loan dollars by the State Revolving Loans Fund. Looked forward to construction of the Murray and Liberty Center Sewer Collection Systems, NTSRF. This award was dedicated to the Regional Sewer District based on the needs of the community, the project priority score established by the state, and the Regional Sewer District's readiness to proceed. The district would not have been able to do this without the support of the county commissioners and the council in providing matching dollars for the planning process, as well as a loan dedicated towards the engineering and permitting of these two areas. With this award, the projects will be released for bid the end of 2020, with construction beginning as early as May of 2021. A project schedule will be discussed by the board during the regular meeting September fourteenth at six thirty PM. So that was a massive grant towards the sewer district. So for the board members, and I think Leon's in here somewhere, Leon, certainly they're very grateful to the support that they've received from the Commissioners and for council. Had we not been able to say we could close within the third quarter of next year, which to them was actually March of 2021, we wouldn't have been eligible for that money. That money would have gone and passed over to some other communities. So thank you, council. And I'm actually going to talk to council tonight and express that and encourage them forward in what we can do moving forward as well. So with that.
Fantastic. Again, we appreciate your input. And again, Leon's just been really faithful and put in a lot of hours.
And then we'll finally be able to start talking about what rates are going to be once we get the construction bids in. So that's definitely steps for the public. Yeah, that comes up to about an eighty-five percent grant. So I mean, really, as far as what the district's going to have to try to borrow against it, it's a very small percentage at that point. So it really sets the tone for what they're going to be able to do. So with that, going on to Bridge One Ninety-three, the heat straightening and painting. This is the Three Hundred West over the Walsh River. Work is moving ahead quickly, actually. I'm anticipating opening the bridge certainly earlier than expected. Painting the bridge will start the week of September fourteenth. So all the heat straightening and replacement numbers are supposed to be in here this week. Thankfully, it rained over the weekend and not during the week. So I actually am not losing time on that project. That's fantastic. So I'll be getting some updates on that schedule.
One day, two day, five day.
My concern right now is I'm working on some scheduled pieces and I'm not prepared yet to talk too much about. It's going to be the camera system.
Gotcha.
As much as this work is moving ahead earlier than scheduled, the camera system and monitoring, the poles are in back order. Essentially, they want to make so many of them. So the drop date of the permanent poles are late, like November. And I don't think anybody in this room or outside of this room wants to see the bridge closed for that long, just for a monitoring system. So we're going to try to work with, I got a phone call with RMC after this meeting, to go through power. We're going to temporary something in so that we can monitor it and then we can go with good confidence opening the structure up. So I want to make sure that that happens. So I've got a couple of conference calls this week. And I think Shambal said that they've got pole, temporary poles ready so we can mount something. It's going to look rougher than what our final product is, but for most people, they'll know that it's being monitored. And if we continue to have oversized loads taking that route, essentially illegal oversized loads taking that route, they will be caught on camera. So.
Keep this posted.
Will do. And another thing, and some of you've got the picture of this, I'm still having an issue on some of these bridges where we're doing rehab or maintenance where drivers are moving barricades and driving across the structures that they can get through. Usually, it's just passenger cars. But once they start moving the barricades, then anybody is getting through. And so I sent you the picture. I mean, the bridge has got pieces missing in the superstructure, and they're still just pulling, pulling the barricades and driving through. So it's something that I'm going to have to address because it's happened a number of times. Usually, it's been limited to someone stealing signs or petty theft. But that becomes an issue. And it's cost our contractors money, which means it's going to cost the county money. And bad behavior shouldn't apply to everybody. So we're going to, I'm going to look at steps we're going to take in future projects to try to eliminate that. So we'll see what we have to do. If that's just, it's not good practice. It puts structures at risk. This one, maybe less so with a small car. But I mean, we start getting into more rural areas, there's quite a bit of damage that can be done. So moving on to the White Bridge, this is Bridge Three Oh Four, Four Fifty East, south of Two Oh One, Zero Two Oh One, over the Walsh. Again, another Big River Bridge. That bridge is scheduled for closure starting September fourteenth. We're doing a full deck rehab. So they're going to mill and hydro demo the surface course. And they're going to redo the in-bends and the approach slams. We've got some voids underneath those areas. So that's going to be a full closure, vehicles and pedestrians. It certainly has an impact to the trail in that area. So Bluffton Trails and the Wells County Trails Group have been notified of this. So they're working schedules around that to try to accommodate it. Again, this project's looking at about a sixty to seventy-five day closure window. So it's a big detour. Hopefully, we can get one bridge open sooner rather than later. Thankfully, the two don't carry the same groups of traffic. So I'm not making people do very, very long detours. So and hopefully, that one will go quickly. That'll just come down to weather dependent as far as being done any earlier or not. So on the next piece here, we got a federal aid call for projects. This is twenty twenty-six construction projects. The call will open November second and close December eleventh of this year. It's for that fiscal year twenty-six, which really is late twenty-five, early twenty-six. They're looking for opportunities for projects. This is again, eighty percent grant opportunity for road or bridge projects. We've got some things that are in study, but I'll probably come back with a list of projects to you as far as recommendations that you can look at for funding or financing. I just need to, I need to identify matching dollars and which projects you want to prioritize. And then I can get the analysis done. I've just got a couple of months here in prep. I can't start it until the second, and then the door closes hard December eleventh. So on the next call, typically, it's been every year, but depending on COVID and federal funding availability, there can be twelve-month gaps that could skip a year. I mean, it just kind of depends. So when the opportunity is there, it's always good to put your foot in. And we've been very successful recently on projects doing that. So now I have a couple of options, and I may send them individually to you. But if you've got others that aren't on that list, just let me know, and then I can vet them for it through. So, all right. Speed limit ordinance, working, I have an actual working spreadsheet right now of the different ordinances that are in place and speed limits. Actually, I did have a meeting with the sheriff's office and the deputies, kind of going through what we have. We're going to vet all the sign locations, make sure that everything's posted as it's supposed to. Anything that's posted is not supposed to. And then we're going to try to get something updated for you here in the short term. I have been asked by Josh Hunt if we would be willing, or if I would be willing to meet with the city police chief and look at areas in and around the city of Bluffton. Was a part of our discussion earlier on, but I wanted to bring that up. If you were willing or wanted me to do that same kind of step with the city, making sure that those match up across the board, is always our intent. But I think he was hoping that we would look at some other speed limits in areas in and around Bluffton. Wouldn't be anything inside the city of Bluffton, to my knowledge. It was looking at some of the county roads leading into and out of Bluffton.
Fine.
I don't have any issue with that. I mean, you're not, you're talking, discussing, you're not making decisions.
Yeah. So we wouldn't be making any changes directly if they were.
You'll bring it to us.
Absolutely. I just, before I went off and started spending additional time working on potentially city questions and issues, I wanted to at least let you know that I was asked. Certainly, it's an expansion of the scope of kind of what we're looking at right now. So.
Keep this posted.
Will do. And then the last thing that I have on my list is right-of-way dedications. Roy's got four of them. Minor subdivisions, and actually one for road conversion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any other questions for me?
Thanks, Nate.
Hey, no, we're good.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Okay. One, two. Kyle? Dan?
All stars.
Adam?
Good morning. How's everyone doing today?
Good.
Good here. So by the threats against my well-being and the congratulations today, I take it word has made it out of the bag. I'm going to be resigning my position as nine-one director. I have taken a role with Motorola Solutions that I will begin on the twenty-first of September. I just want to thank you all. You've been very easy to work with over the years, and it's been a great experience. We might truly miss the people that I've dealt with in this position. And you guys are really kind. So in the interim, we need to have someone to be the nine-one director for the Bluffton Dispatch Center. So my recommendation to you is that Kyle Randall, the chief of police, who is my boss, who is me being the overseer of the dispatch center. So in turn, it's his, it's his show to run. So that will be my recommendation as to who would be the interim or future nine-one director for the position. Any questions for me and the rest of that?
No, I think, as I shared earlier with you, we really appreciate everything you've done for us over the years and looking out for the best interest of the citizens of the city and the county through all of that. And I would gladly accept your recommendation to further your better interests and career changes. It's really congratulatory. And I would make a motion that we would appoint Kyle Randall to the position to replace Adam.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero.
I just want you to know that while I've worked with you, I've never had to get extra money. We've always had it in the fund. Now, I don't know if Kyle's going to continue that streak, but I sure hope so. So.
He's going to get issue refunds.
It's all over now.
Love Kyle.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Adam.
Again, thank you so much.
Very much. Good luck to you.
I totally appreciate it.
Good luck, Kyle.
Mike Junior, we have you next.
I have a quick update on the small business COVID-nineteen grant for Wells County. Tamara, I, Aaron Privile, and a couple other people met the other day to go through the applications. And we went ahead and moved all of them forward. There were a few that we've gotten changed a little bit of how they work. But they're all in the state's hands now. So we hope to have the answer back hopefully by the end of the week or early next week. And then we will go through the claims process to get them paid out. So there was a couple that we had questions on. So the state will clarify on those, whether they are applicable for the funds, as soon as that gets done. So exciting to see it move forward. So we can see here shortly.
Was that the grant for fifty thousand?
Yep. Yep. So we, right now, we have what was sent in as a full expenditure. There wasn't as many applicants as what we were initially hoping for. But we're looking at paying the whole fifty out. And then I have one other thing. There is a event downtown on the seventeenth and eighteenth of this month. While we're not expecting to use or set up anything on the courthouse's property, on the county's property, I wanted to make you aware of it. It'll be an extension of the Tyler City Market. It'll be a downtown music and mural fest. So at least two to three murals going on downtown, and then we'll have music acts and food out at the plaza. So want to let you know that if there is a water concern or water access need, we would ask for permission to fill up containers with the courthouse's hose. That's in the barricade area by the dumpster. And we will work out the deal to pay for any expenses if there is any in that. We believe that we have water coming from the city cap system for all the food vendors. So that shouldn't be an issue.
So Michael, on those mural, murals, that's kind of a concentrated effort around the area, isn't it?
Yes. So that's part of the, there's, so all eleven northeast Indiana counties have at least one mural being done in those next two weeks. And we will have two to three done before October. So we just awarded the second one. So the main, the one that's part of the regional effort is on the plaza, the giant red wall on the plaza. We just awarded a contract on the south-facing wall of Jerry Flax Building, which is in the corner of Main and Market. And Nancy Wagner, local artist, will be doing that work. So exciting to see that. And we're looking for somebody to do one on the north side of the American Legion Wall. It'll be the backside facing the plaza as well. So that's where that's at. But just wanted to let you guys and be aware of that. Your blessing on that, even though we're not setting anything up on that property.
Deadline to have the one for the reveal part is the seventeenth or eighteenth?
So what we've been told is that we should, all mural work should be done before October.
Okay.
So if we can't, if the artists can't do it in that window, we'll have to wait until spring to do it, just because of weather concerns. Once it gets closer to freezing temperatures, you don't want to paint and work. So that is the plan.
Mr. President, I think I'd make a motion. Do we approve of any water that would be required for the project?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Thank you. Yep. Can I move, do he? Sure.
I've got some handouts here if I can. Apologize for not getting those to you earlier. It's just a few statistics that might be of interest to you. My real purpose before we look at those and coming before you this morning is to, we're planning on closing the Veteran Service Office on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of this month, unless there's a problem with that. Both Yvonne and myself, before the street fair got canceled, we had made the plan separately to be gone the last part of that week. So if there's no problems, we'll proceed with that then and close on Wednesday and Thursday of that week. This is, I'm about six weeks into my term as a veteran service officer. So this information that you have before you really is, I'm still riding Claude's, Claude McMillan shirt tails here. But the top part of that gives you, this is a comparison, a five-year comparison, twenty-fourth, fifteen to twenty-nineteen. Various counties around the area, as far as the veteran populations go, you can see that the, there's been a steady decline in veteran population over the last five years. It's down in Wells County, down twenty-two percent. And this is due mainly to just attrition. We've got veterans that are getting older and just in passing on. So I think over the five-year period, that's, that's the main thing that's happened there. Conversely, over that same period, the Conversely, over that same period, the amount of income into the county for compensation and pensions has actually gone up by 22%. And that's essentially due to the Vietnam era veterans becoming more susceptible to diseases that were resulting from Agent Orange. I think that's the main cause of that. So we've actually seen an increase in compensation and pension. In 2019, that brought in about $6.3 million into the county. So we're continuing on there. We had, we've had good interest still. The other day, we had, I think, in one day, we had 11 people come into the office. And so other days, we have very few, but we're busy and enjoying it so far.
Appreciate you doing that.
Great. Thanks, Stuart.
All right. Thank you very much.
I guess we'll do with this, the 50 later resolution.
Just per three coverage, but I've been working on it quite a lot.
Right, we've had a lot of language changes and things like that. I have no issue with the changes. That's going to be made up of people to be the teachers and teachers.
Do we have a chance to talk with the other components of the people involved so that everybody's?
I sent a copy to the health department. Well, actually Lynn Levin's been part of this all along, the greatest senator, Marlene that passed on since some of the responsibilities went there. So I've not heard back from her as far as there being an issue or, yeah, no problem. So. Maybe just get their support blessing. Assuming the news is good news. It might be nice to get positive yes back from them if we don't feel there's any rush.
Any comments on that?
I think we might. They've probably been a little bit busy.
Let's bring this back up.
That's fine, I'm good with that.
September meeting, okay? The CASA program. What's the CASA is up?
Yeah, the judge sent me a proposed contract, and I looked at it, made some suggestions. Next thing I got back was it's been signed. So that contract was drafted for the commissioner's signature as well. So it's already been signed by Judge Kirikoff in certi court. It's already been signed by the CASA program director, which needs commissioner's approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What else do you have under monthly reports?
Pita boa, I have advertised for that, so regarding the October meeting, I'll have some candidates. And also the payroll tax deferral. I emailed you. I don't remember that. You don't remember that?
I mean, what was it?
It was.
The IRS issued guidance on payroll tax deferred that was ordered by the president. And it allows employers to defer withholding on employees' compensation, September through December, just their portion of the Social Security and Medicare. But we would have to collect again.
Next spring.
Next, yes.
Yes, next spring sometime.
If they leave employment, then we're, I guess, responsible for reimbursing that. Some counties are drafting documents to defer so that they don't have to participate. I haven't heard of any that are doing it, so just to you.
I think everybody has been.
They're deferring.
They're not participating.
Right.
Right, correct, yeah.
I would elect not to participate.
I would agree with that.
Do we need Roy to draft any kind of a document?
Draft one.
Yeah, it looked like three months relief, only the double up.
Right.
Three months and next year's.
Yeah.
And all of our people will pay.
Exactly, so.
And then next meeting, September 21st, we usually cancel because of street fair, but it's no street fair, so I'm assuming we're going to have that meeting.
I think we just had the last one, we didn't have it.
Right.
Did we?
Okay.
No, that was what.
So was it something else? Oh, okay. We're having all of our.
And the commissioners.
We didn't discuss the grant before.
Diane didn't bring it up, but I assume we're going to have a very good meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
That is all I have.
Jeff, anything?
Now, the AIC conference is virtual, that I believe starts September 20th. And I think you signed us up, anybody that wants to go on for that. Moving ahead with some things on CARES Act, some of our projects.
We're going to have open comment, but I'm going to let Roy be the disclaimer of who gets to talk and who's going to lead.
Well, I think the commissioners have always opened the floor for comments after commissioners' meeting. So that being said, I think we're open to your comments and commentary, not being on the agenda. I don't think the commissioners can take any official action since it's not agenda, but other than that. Word all ears.
Ted?
I will be brief today. Put it off here so I don't get off the chair. First of all, thank you, too.
Bring the chair.
Yeah, go ahead and have a seat.
Have a seat, okay.
Name, address.
Oh, okay, yeah, name, address.
We know you, Ted.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, I do want to thank you for, I remember a long time ago, this was not allowed. And so, again, I'll be brief. And I do remember about a decade ago, at least now, being involved with many of these meetings. And personally, I want to thank you, Kevin, Tammy, Blake, for your service in Wells County and what you've done. I do realize that you got a lot on your plate, and it's not easy. There's a lot of things going on. So with that, I am here speaking on behalf of another friend, and you are my friends. I hope I'm still your friend, okay? But I'm here speaking on behalf of another friend, Matt Jürgler, who is also my brother in Christ. And I want to say that I believe, this is my belief, that Matt has been singled out because he simply spoke publicly about what he believed to be the truth about the COVID-19 issue. And I also understand that he believes that the ninth commandment, not to bear false witness, goes further than not just speaking an outright lie. Okay? Don't bear false witness. And so I'm reminded of, if you're familiar with Dietrich Bonhoeffer, the German Lutheran pastor of World War II, before World War II, he was trying to fight against what the Nazis were doing in the regime. And he made a comment, and this is what reminded me of that. He said that not to speak is to speak, and not to act is to act, and that silence in the face of evil is evil itself. And so with that, I believe that Governor Holcomb and many other politicians have broken the law of both constitutions, both federal and state. And I'm not going to give a lecture on constitutional law because I'm not a professor, but I do know there's a separation of powers. And I believe that he has usurped that in that he doesn't have the power to just unilaterally declare a law. He is the executive, all right? And so both the constitution, both Indiana and the federal, do prohibit that. Article three in the Indiana constitution is the separation of powers. I just mentioned that. And the only, and I brought this up at the meeting that was held by the health department down here, there was the big crowd. And I spoke on that issue right there, that if you examine the Indiana constitution, the only thing under executive power, because it's outside of the branch that he's in, is that he could, in case of danger or disease, call for a change of venue of where the legislature would meet. In other words, it wouldn't meet in Indianapolis. It could meet, you know, some other city in case of disease or danger. That's the only power that he has to do that. And I know the nice little lady that spoke in the opposition of Matt, after that meeting was over, she looked at me, and after I had made that comment, she looked at me and she said, "Thank you." She said, "I didn't know that." So there's merit to that. All right, so I do want to make note that Curtis Hill, the attorney general of the state of Indiana, also made that same assertion, that he's exceeded those bounds. I know the governor of North Dakota, no shutdown, no mandates at all. I do know that the state of Kansas has like 110 counties, and of those 110 counties, 90 of them said, "No, we are not going to follow this governor's mandate." And I think I left a voicemail with you, Blake, that the Wabash County commissioners here just a few weeks ago.
It was the council.
Council, okay.
Not the commissioner.
Not the commissioner, okay. Well, whoever's in charge there, signed a joint resolution that they just said, "No, we're not going to follow that." So there is precedent for that. And so I was impressed, or I should say pleasantly surprised, I was part of the group that met with the Bluffton city council or common council. And to my surprise, there was four of the five that voiced support for Matt and his plight in what he had done. Now, I don't know, you know, what they're going to do beyond that, but I was pleasantly surprised about that. And to finish up, I do believe that you guys are what's called the lesser magistrates. Okay, you're not the governor, you're down here somewhere. And I do believe that whenever the lesser magistrates see something that's being done that's unjust or wrong or against the law, they have a duty to at least speak to that. Okay? And so I want to call you to do that, and I'll finish with, a fellow friend of Dietrich Bonhoeffer was the Lutheran pastor Martin Niemauer, if you're familiar with that. He said, and this is after he was in jail, he said, "First, they arrested the communists, but I was not a communist, so I did nothing. Then they came for the social democrats, but I was not a social democrat, so I did nothing. Then they arrested the trade unionists, and I did nothing because I was not one. And then they came for the Jews and the Catholics, but I was neither Jew nor Catholic, and I did nothing. At last, they came and arrested me, and there was no one left to do anything about." And so I just want to leave that as my feelings on this and to urge you to consider what's happening here. And I don't know what you think you can do, or if you can do anything, but I would just ask you, as a friend, to consider that. Just what might be the outcome.
Thanks, Ted.
I agree that not to speak and not to act is probably the wrong thing, and certainly have considered a lot of what is going on, and I appreciate that you expressed it in the form of an opinion, because we're all entitled to opinions. And unfortunately, I think Mr. Jürgler has used the county and the health department and a lot of the people here to fight a fight against the state, and he's missed the target. If his opposition is to what the governor has done, that's where it needs to hit first and then work his way down. And I feel that he has attacked the health department, and not in a Christian manner. And if you want to start talking about commandments, you know, Matthew 22, 36 through 40, says, "Teacher, which is the greatest commandment in the law?" And Jesus says, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart and all your soul and all your mind. This is the first and greatest commandment, and the second is like it, love your neighbor as yourself." All the law and the prophets hang on these two commandments. And that speaks to relationship. And I think there's been a lot of relationships hurt because of the way this has been approached. It has been approached with anger, and it's been approached with divisiveness, and I don't like what I'm seeing in the community because it's playing people against people, and it's playing God's word to give authority to what Matt is saying. And when we're trying to sort out whether it's really God speaking or not, you have to look, does it match with all the rest of what God says in the Bible? You know, the fruit of the Spirit, what love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. And I'm not seeing a lot of gentleness or self-control or peace or patience or any of that going on right now. People are getting angry. So I'd really like to see, if Matt wants to fight this, I would like to see him fight it through the right channels, through the way that he should be handling it. If he wants to do his attorneys and go and fight with the governor and the state, I think that's where he should be targeting, not picking on people in the health department that are trying to do their job. You know, and then it also makes me wonder if he's using God's name and God's word to give himself authority. And if he is, shame on him, because it says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit, rather humbly value others above yourself." And I think that's what we've tried to do as Wells County. We're trying to keep our numbers low and to protect people and asking people to wear masks because we don't want them to spread the disease. And we've done a great job. I mean, we've got some of the lowest numbers in the state. And is that because COVID doesn't exist? I think it's because we're doing the right thing here in Wells County. I think it's because we are spacing, we're wearing our masks, we're doing what we're supposed to do. And if a person comes in, to me as a physician, and says, "I don't think I need my blood pressure medicine anymore because my blood pressure's 120 over 80," I think it's because they're taking their medicine, not because they don't need their blood pressure medicine. So same way, I think what we're doing has been effective, and I would really hate to see this be an example to all the other restaurants, to all the other grocery stores and places that don't want to wear masks, because I don't see it as a loss of liberty. And you still have the argument, did the governor do right or wrong? I understand that, and that's a separate issue. But here in Wells County, when we're all working together, it's a society, it's a community. I love you guys, I don't want to give you my germs, I'm going to wear my mask. I know it's not going to protect me from breathing in other people's germs or touching things and getting it in my body, but if I sneeze or cough, it's going to stay here. It's not going to be six feet from me. So that's the reason for wearing masks. And people don't understand that. They think, "Oh, I don't need to wear a mask because I'm not afraid of catching it." It's not you. It's, you're looking for the other person. You're taking care of your brother, you're taking care of your Christian brother and sister by wearing the mask. So I have a real issue with the way it's being handled. So, I have a real issue with the way it's being done. And I just, I hope that people would wanna wear masks, because they care about other people, and that they love other people, and they wanna do the right thing, and that they would take up the political issue in the right political venue, which would be the state, because as commissioners, we have no authority over the local Health Department, and as my brothers and sisters and friends, and I see them doing their job in and out every day, I feel like they're the ones that are being abused and singled out. But, that's my opinion, just my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone have a comment?
My name's Roger Thornton, 1335 Hollendale Drive, Bluffton, Indiana. I'm here today to hopefully offer encouragement to you. I appreciate much the discussion you just made of the issue. Well said, I'll not try to better that, because I wouldn't be able to. What I would like to share is that I believe that the people you have appointed to the Health, the Board of Health, are fine folks who truly represent what is best for our community. The way some of them have been treated, and the way some of your staff has been treated, is not the Bluffton or the Wells County I've come to know. I hope we get back to doing things in the way we normally do. I personally am deeply appreciative of the stance that has been taken, that has permitted our county to remain low in count, to let our schools proceed, to let our kids operate in classrooms with teachers in a safe manner, and to the best I've been able to learn, the kids, the staff, the administration, the parents are honoring that on a regular basis. We need Yerges in our community, but we need Yerges within the guidelines, and I so appreciate you suggesting that the conflicts be settled, if you will, from my perspective, in the courts. That's where it belongs. Let's move on with keeping Bluffton moving ahead. I so look forward to the positive working relationship with commissioners, between the commissioners and the City Council. I hope and trust that will continue. We can all do better, we can move forward, and I hope we do that within the manner in which we normally treat each other. Sometimes, people say, "Let's hit the pause button." Pause button might not be a bad thing to hit right now, and to reassess and to say, "The people who are taking the impact of this, are those really the people that we wanna convince, or are the courts the better venue?" Thank you for the work you do. Thank you to your Board of Health and others who serve this county and this community so well. We need you, more people than I can count, support you. The comments coming to me have been so strong in terms of, "Let's honor what has been asked of businesses, let's do it, and let's keep Wells County a safe place that it's proven to be thus far." Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I didn't make any notes, but I'm gonna try to speak with as little emotion as I can, 'cause I consider this an emotional issue. In the 50 years that I've been in Wells County, I can only think of two other issues that have been more divisive than this one. The first one was the strike of Franklin Electric of 78 and 79, which I was directly involved with, and the windmill issue a few years ago. Now, we have COVID. I guess I'll begin with saying that I personally believe that the governor has exceeded his authority, and has put the Board of Health and the Health Department in a tough situation. I was also at the Board of Health meeting with a big crowd here when Matt spoke, and a number of other people, and I just felt that Brandy and Marlene particularly are doing the best they can with what knowledge they have, and they have the best interest of the community in mind. I wholeheartedly believe that. I feel sorry for them, but on the other hand, after being on the RSD as long as I have been, and have attended a number of Board of Health meetings, I'm usually about the only one at those meetings, sometimes Nate is there.
6:30, that's pretty early.
Yeah, it is early, especially for a retired man. But one thing that I have noticed in the two years that I've been attending Board of Health meetings, is that the board themselves, who are appointed, seem to be very passive when it comes to issues. In the most, the strongest time that I can think of, and I have my notes here, I took notes for that meeting, it was a Board of Health meeting of December 19th. L.A. Brown was in attendance at that meeting too, another fellow RSD member, and he and I strongly believe that the RSD needs to work in conjunction with the Board of Health and the Health Department. We think we need a working cooperation. And L.A. made a, or he added a question, he says, "We need a county comprehensive plan. Will the Board of Health back up the RSD?" There was total silence. I mean, not one of the board members made any comment, and their silence was spoke volumes, and some other comments were made, and L.A. brought it up again, and there was still silence. So, from my point of view, from my seat, I considered the board to be very passive. But then, for the two board members to go and file formal complaints, really, really surprised me, and I have no idea what the Board of Health's job description consists of, and I have no idea what the past practice has been as far as board members filing a formal complaint. I can remember Brandy talking about restaurants who have been, other restaurants who have been non-compliant with the temperature of the food, or the cleanliness of the floor, and the board members just listened, they just heard the reports, they never took action. But now, when it comes to Yerges, two board members filed a formal complaint. That kind of surprised me, threw me for a loop. Another thing I have to say is, about 26 hours after Yerges was shut down by the Health Department, my wife and I ordered a pizza from a restaurant in Marco. I went over there to pick it up, expecting to have to wear a mask in there because of the governor's ordinance. I walk up to the door, and it said, "Masks are optional." So, I carried my mask in, and walked up to the counter, and I noticed no customers were wearing a mask. I saw three employees not wearing a mask. And they asked me for my name, and if I was here to pick up and order, and I told them who I was, and they said it'd be a couple minutes. So, I asked the lady behind the counter, I said, "You must," and I knew the answer, but I said, "You must not be in Wells County." And she's, "No, we're in Huntington County." And she says, "Why?" And I said, "Well, none of you are wearing a mask." I said, "Why is that?" And she says, and I'm glad the sheriff is here, because she said, "Our sheriff said he was not gonna enforce that ordinance or law, whatever you wanna call it." "Oh, that's interesting." And she says, "You're referring to Yerges in Bluffton, aren't you?" I said, "Yeah, I am." And she says, "Well, what Wells County does is their business, but Huntington County, it's optional." And then a customer happened to overhear us, and she said, "Who's out to get Yerges anyhow?" And I said, "I have no idea, I just don't know." The last thing I have to say is, I fully, fully understand where doctors and nurses and the Health Department are coming from and wearing a mask. I get it, but in Matt Yergel's case, with a private restaurant, he is not forcing people to come in and not wear a mask, he's just giving them the option. I think it's, in a free enterprise business, he has that right to do that, and if he has to go through the legal system, that's probably the right way to go. But I support him, and he's not forcing anyone to come in. If I am a customer, and I feel uncomfortable about employees not wearing a mask in a restaurant, I'd go to another restaurant. I have that right, but still, America. I just, that part, I totally support Matt on, he's not forcing anyone to come in and get sick. That's a people's choice. I guess in my personal heart, in my gut feeling, when I was standing, talking to the employees in Huntington County, and the attitude that they had, I felt like I was in America. When I came back to Wells County, I had reservations that bothers me, that's all I have to say.
I agree, and I understand that part, Leon, I really do, the private thing, which is one of the reasons why I would hesitate to make it a change in Wells County, because if we take it, I mean, if it's a restaurant, you have the choice to go in, but there's some places you don't really have a choice to go in, the grocery stores and places like that. So, how do you pick and choose which ones do and which ones don't? It's another issue, another question, I don't have the answer for it.
Leon brings up a good point, you know, I recall a couple of years ago, when that diner at Ossian was serving horse food for their toast, did any health board members go up there to check it out and file a formal complaint? I mean, it's a pretty good question. You know, normally, like Leon said, they observe Brandy's recommendations and complain that they don't drive there themselves and sign anything.
I'm not defending them, I'm just wondering if the reason they did it was because they were getting verbal complaints, and there was enough opposition in this case that they felt like they had to make it official by making it written. I don't know. I, I'm not defending them.
So, can I speak? I don't read, don't? Go ahead.
This will be the last comment.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't even planning on speaking today. Honestly, I didn't come to speak, but I'm felt moved to do so. First of all, I thank everybody, I thank you guys for your time and the position you guys have, whether you think I'm here to be divisive in this community, or you're here thinking that I'm fighting for liberty, I mean, in this community, that is something that history's going to have to prove out. I have tried to be above reproach ever since this started. I, Tamara, you say that I'm angry, and that I'm dealing with this in a harsh way, and I don't know the evidence you have of that. I have never once, I've never once raised my voice to the Health Department. Me and Brandy have had hours of conversation in her office, and it has been with respect, and I have not raised my voice ever in any meetings I have attended, whether it be in front of Mr. Thornton, or in front of the Health Department. It's not out of anger, I'm not angry. I am, I am, yes, I am personally angry that my business got ripped from me by the government. My private business that I have worked for to provide for my family and my kids for years was taken away over something that is unconstitutional, that does make me angry. However, I'm not taking that out on people. I am angry at the government for allowing this to happen, and so, I'm not, I'm not, I might have asked for people to resign, that's not angry, that's just what I think should happen, because of the circumstances and the situations that has played out in this whole ordeal. So, Tamara, I do reject that. I'm not angry, I'm not trying to divide this community at all, I'm trying to run a business. All I wanna do is open my business and serve this community, and to provide for my family. That is, that's what I want. I don't want a court fight, I don't want, I don't want, I don't wanna go through this, that's, I'm not, this is dreadful to me. And so, I do wanna say also that... .................................